Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, August the 18th, 2015. We give you a warm welcome. Appreciate all of you being here. Madam Clerk, all the Commissioners are here, along with the County Manager and the County Attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would at this time, check your mobile devices and silence those for me at this time, if you would, make sure they're all turned off. If you are a Speaker tonight, I ask that you move to the microphone very closely for me, if you would. Our first two items tonight will be our invocation. Our invocation will be by Pastor Nathan Morlowe from the Gospel Baptist Church, and immediately after the invocation, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have with us troop number 184 from the First Baptist Church of Morganton, troop number 188 from North Liberty School, PTO, troop number 898 from Mount Hebron Lutheran Church, all under the direction of Clint Belkey, District Executive, Pinock Council Boy Scouts of America. So we'll start out with our invocation, if you'll stand with me, and immediately after that, we will have our pledge. Pastor Morlowe?
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you today, we want to say thank you, Lord, for your grace, for your mercy, for this wonderful day that you've given us, for allowing us together here today. And God, I thank you for these people, and for what they stand for, what they do, and God, I pray that God, just as Solomon, God prayed for wisdom, God, I pray asking for your wisdom in every mind and in every heart here tonight, God, I pray that, Lord, that you would help them to come in unity, help them make the right decisions, and Lord, I pray that you would lead them and guide them through all that is said and done here tonight. And we want to say that we thank you, and give you all the glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you'll remain standing for presentation of the colors.
(inaudible)
down and have a picture with you. All right, y'all kind of gather in as much as you can. All right, gentlemen, let's see if we can find a place.
Need someone to point people where to go.
Parents, if anybody, parents want to take pictures, jump on up here. Please, give it to me right there in the middle, so we can get one down here. All right, that's probably what you're going to hold some of. Three, one, two, three. All right, ladies and gentlemen, parents. Is that everybody? All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, give it around for applause. We have one more. Absolutely, I will vouch for. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, fair and proper applause.
Where's Bob?
Where?
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 What a great organization, I really do appreciate that. All right, item number four, gentlemen's approval, the meeting minutes, before you have June 2nd, 2015 Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting minutes, I think you've had time to look at those, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not any changes or deletions on those minutes, I'll make a motion to approve those as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question on those minutes.
Okay.
It's under personal use, it's out of number four. We brought this up during the meeting, and I thought we got it changed a little bit. I feel like I'm breaking policy, it says employees may not take equipment home or on vacation for personal use. And I thought we put an exception for Commissioners who obviously need them to do our job, so... Who's the IT Director?
He's not here.
Okay. All right, can we just make that a point of reference, and see what they do?
Absolutely. Okay, no problem at all. With that said, you've heard Wayne's motion, all in favor signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk, thank you so much. Item number six, our presentations, the first thing on is the proclamation recognizing the 2015 Southeastern Regional Big League Women's Softball Team, and I have the honor of doing that. So at this time, I would like to ask Coach Mike Hassan and other coaches that may be here with the team and the team itself, Michael, if you could have the team kind of come over to this side, and the coaches come over to this side, that would be great.
We got the agenda, but we can do that later.
Gentlemen, before we get started in that, as they get moving up here and get situated, I moved over item number five, which is approved, the agenda is amended. The only new item was, I think, the resolution in support of the recreational trail, so...
So move again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Come down here with the coaches. We have a proclamation recognizing the Multi Big League softball team consists of fifty female high school athletes, Megan Bubbaugh, Megan Clark, Megan Cook, Megan Hunt, Megan Lewis, Megan Hubbs, Megan Pearson, Jordan French, Megan Swain, Megan Smith, and Brittany Westbrook, and whereas under the leadership of Coach Mike Hassan, Megan Bubbaugh, Megan Lewis, Megan Smith, and the sponsorship of the Multi Recreation Department by Gary Lindhart, the Multi softball team won the Big League, Little League, and North Carolina State Championship hosted by the Multi Recreation and Recreation Board members. The team did represent the North Carolina Southern Southeast Regional State of Fort Myers, Florida, win over Tennessee, Virginia, and a final win over Florida, the team advanced with the United States Southeast Champions of the League World Series in Morris Sussex, Delaware, where they competed against teams from around the world, and whereas throughout the season and during the championship play, the team exhibited the tenacity and determination of a championship caliber softball team. Working together, these young women illustrated that drive, skills, and good sportsmanship, both on and off the field, can certainly pay off, and they serve as a shining example for all the athletes, and whereas special commendation is due to all team members, Coach Hassan and his staff, Multi Recreation Director Gary Lindhart, and the surrounding community of friends and families who have given generously of their time and moral support, and whereas it is with great pleasure that the Burke County Board of Commissioners pause to recognize the accomplishment, accomplishments, and dedication of these fine athletes and their coaches, and congratulate them on their momentous success. Now therefore, being proclaimed, the Burke County Board of Commissioners officially acknowledge the habits, the skills, the teamwork, the sportsmanship, and success of the 2015 Southeastern Big League Champion Women's Softball Team, and on behalf of the Burke County, we do hereby extend this expression of our pride in this prestigious milestone, and wish them well in their future endeavors, and on behalf of the Burke County, the board of commissioners. Thank you, Michael. Ladies and gentlemen...
You can probably hear me. If I could just say a couple of words, and y'all know I'm... Don't count, please don't count. But I'd like to say that I've been able to just play in numerous events throughout the years, and nothing, nothing holds any more prestige and honor than this event that we just participated in, this couple of long events. The, and I guess the real kicker here is, is when you have an opportunity to represent your county, your city, and your citizens that we've had, and to be recognized by your county, your citizens, and the city as you're doing for us, that's a thrill, and that really means more than playing in anything that I've ever played in, but that's whenever you really know that you've accomplished something, is when your city, your citizens, your county recognizes you, and what those companies and ladies have accomplished. And these girls running here are class act, you can be proud of them. They came down to two teams on the Sportsmanship Award, us and Italy, and I can tell you that we're real, we didn't win at Italy, but it's well represented by Italy, or even with us. And right now, today, as we speak, there's some mortgage shirts being worn in Italy today on the girls. So these girls had a great time, and it was a great honor for this board to recognize us. And I'd like to ask one of the players from Taylor Queen, if you don't mind, just stepping out and giving a player perspective of our opportunity.
I mean, it was a great time down there, it was once in a lifetime experience. We all had a great time, and we all clicked with Italy very well. It was a lot of fun. And I want to thank the coaches, because they've been with us every step of the way, they've helped us improve and everything, and also to Morgan, to Edinburgh County, for helping us get to where we are, and also Gary Lindhart, Gary Lindhart, for all of this, and also paying for this every step, and then, I mean, it was a great experience for all of us. I mean, we've also all learned the same one, it's just nothing, nothing you never realized it, it was a great experience.
We've got three that are here tonight, three of y'all, good to hear one of the coaches, Joey Lewis, he had to work, couldn't be here, a long time off here in this event. I hope he doesn't miss anybody. Megan Clark, Megan Lee, Megan Hassan, Megan Smith, and Brittany Westbrook, couldn't be here, in front of the obligations.
Someone going to college.
College, someone's going to college, first of all, they're going to college, but I'm at another age, but again, you were well represented, and these girls are class act.
Gentlemen, if you want to join me down here for a picture, I would really appreciate that.
Yes.
I know the girls with, the girls, if you mind, but before we, as they're coming down here, I want to make one more recognition, recognition, with a pair of these, pairs are relatively these girls' best man, I want to applaud them.
(inaudible) I made a hard flight here, son.
Hey, Angela, hey, extend up, come on in, get in there. All right, guys.
(inaudible). (inaudible). Hey, Angela, hey, extend up, come on in, get in there. (inaudible). 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 I'll tell you, guys, I'll tell you all one more, but in fact, I mean, it's a great life, one in life. Out of the last, out of the twenty days of the event, seventeen of them were spent traveling and playing ball, but that's okay, and played for three days. They earned every bit of it.
And we earned every time.
Okay. (inaudible). 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 Well, it appears we're going to lose fifty percent of everybody, isn't it? Where'd our crowd go? Yeah, where'd the crowd go? Where'd the crowd go? Judge Keener? I got a draw today.
All right, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve the proclamation, to adopt the proclamation.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor signify by raising your right hands, that will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk, thank you so very much. Move on to our scheduled public hearings. Number one will be Community Developed Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2015-03, in a public hearing presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable board members. Ms. Drawn, how are you? I have several items tonight. The first one is rezoning request from John Hamill. John is here tonight, and this zoning map amendment is a request to rezone three parcels of land that total twelve and a half acres. They're located off of Grove Avenue in the Linville Township. They're identified as pin numbers 17643, 25133, 1764328378, and 1764319858. The applicant requests the property to be rezoned from R2 Residential to Conservation District Low Density, which is CDL. These are also located near, off of St. Paul's Church Road and North Powerhouse Road, might be a better reference. As far as the site analysis goes, this land uses in the vicinity include a mix of both residential and vacant wooded land. The parcels are in close proximity to Lake James, East Shores Community, and Mimosa Fishing Club. There are no FEMA-designated floodplains on any of the parcels. The property is located within the Catawba River, WS4 Protected Water Supply watershed, which essentially means that it's limited to twenty-four percent impervious surface for development. There is public water along North Powerhouse Road, however, there is no public sewer available in this area. The topography of the three parcels varies considerably. There is a one-hundred-and-four-foot elevation change on parcel one, as well as parcel two. There are no known water courses on any of the three parcels, so no blue lines show up on the one-twenty-four-thousand-scale maps, which is what we use to determine water, and the land drains southwards towards Muddy Creek. As far as the zoning that surrounds these parcels, to the north, you'll find R2 Residential, as well as R1 Residential. South of the property is Conservation District Low Density. East is Residential Two, and west is Residential Two. As far as conformity with the comprehensive plan, the 2005 Lake James Phase Two Plan recommends the future land use for this area as High Density Residential. That's actually sort of close, because right behind that, it recommends Low Density. So these are general maps, so it could be Low Density or High Density, based on the analysis. Based on the existing topography, it is very, is highly unlikely that Parcels Two or Three could ever lend themselves to residential development. Development of Parcel One is limited to a small, narrow area running along a portion of a ridge length where extensive grading has taken place. On-site wastewater disposal systems would be required for any type of development of these parcels. As far as the staff recommendation goes, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request based on the proximity to existing Conservation District zoning, the amount of land within the proposed rezoning request, and the existing topographical challenges of the parcels, which we do not believe would lend itself to High Density Residential development. It is the opinion of staff that the two, that two of the three parcels will not allow residential development, as shown in the Phase Two Plan. The planning board met on June 25th, 2015, and they voted five-two to recommend approval of the rezoning. As far as the statement of zoning consistency goes, I will read that. The proposed amendment to the official zoning map has aspects which are consistent with the Lake James Phase Two Plan, in that Conservation District zoning was first proposed under the Lake James Two Plan. Two-hundred-and-twenty-one acres have been rezoned to Conservation District Low Density in this area. The amendment also proposes the construction and establishment of a new commercial facility to benefit the citizens of Burke County. This rezoning has the potential to enhance and revitalize the property despite its topographical challenges. The applicant is here this evening, if you all would like to ask him any questions, or if he would like to clarify anything that I presented to you.
Before we do that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to ZMA 2015-03? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, questions for Scott or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I think I've got all my questions answered during pre-agenda, I have none.
Anyone else? All right, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to give him a chance to speak?
If you would like for him to.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adopt an ordinance amended in the Burke County zoning map as it relates to ZMA 2015-03.
Would you add to adopt the zoning consistency statement?
Yes.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion on the motion to adopt and adopt the zoning consistency statement. All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to zero. Thank you so very much. Moving on to our next public hearing is a zoning text amendment, ZTA 2015-01. Scott Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is actually one text, it's two, it's one text amendment that deals with two subjects, and these are actually sort of important. And last year, the state legislature passed some legislation that essentially required counties and cities to adopt an allowance that would allow for medical hardships. When they passed those rules that we needed to adopt, what essentially we needed to do was make an allowance for what was termed three-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot pods. The issue was, these pods are built to state building code, that's the requirement out of the legislation. When they passed that, it becomes very difficult for landowners to find or to bring anything that meets the state building code onto their property that can be utilized for grandmothers or, you know, for people who need medical assistance and care. So we felt that we should take the opportunity, if somebody's going to spend that kind of money on a modular unit, to address it and to make it to where it could actually be a permanent structure and become part of their property and not temporary, because our general research was showing that to bring even a temporary one on is going to run ten to twenty thousand dollars, and so for not a lot more, you could build the accessory dwelling structure. And so that is what made this amendment increase in size. The other thing was, is our friend Maynard Taylor's was always asking me why other people in the county were not allowed to put any type of structure on their vacant parcels. So no matter how big the land was, ten, twenty, a hundred acres, they couldn't even store something, like put a shed on it to store equipment, to take care of the land or anything. So we kept getting requests and requests in from different people with different ideas on putting structures on these, and what we found is people had to resort to, I won't say misleading, but they had to fall under an agricultural exemption in order to put a barn, or a shed, or a pole thing on a vacant property. And of course, a lot of people just aren't that, and they had the need. So that is what spurred the two amendments that I'm bringing before you tonight. So these amendments are to Sections 402, which is a definition, 920, 1103.02, and 1103.03 of the Burke County zoning ordinance. In addition, we added Section 1103.04 to the zoning ordinance, and I'd like to go over those briefly at this time. The first thing that we did is we struck out one of the definitions. The definitions fall in Section 402. We struck out the definition of garage apartment, because we added a new definition called accessory dwelling unit, and the garage apartment is included in that new definition. So in your handout, or in the staff report, anything that's a strike through has been deleted from the existing zoning ordinance, and anything that's bold and underlined will be added. So the accessory dwelling unit definition that will be added reads, "A small, independent residential structure, providing kitchen, bathing, and sleeping space on the same property as the existing primary residential dwelling unit. The term shall include garage apartment and guest house." Section 1103 deals with accessory and temporary structures. One of the amendments was in Section 1103.02 dealing with accessory structures, and the first change that we thought that we should make is there was a table for setbacks of the accessory structures. The table... The table was basically based on the square footage of that structure, and then the setback got bigger as the structure got bigger. So, we felt that it was almost an arbitrary type of allowance that was requiring the setbacks to go up. So, for every thousand square feet of storage structure, it went up 10 feet. So, by the time you were at 4,000 on a very large property, it was a 50-foot setback. So, we thought that that was probably unnecessary because of being here with all the terrain and the issues. That could really be devastating to some properties. So, we struck out the 2,001 to 3,000, the 3,001 to 4,000, and 4,001 or more, and only left two setbacks, that being 10 feet or 20 feet. After that, as the structures get bigger, based on the amendment, you could come to the Board of Adjustment and ask, you know, for approval for larger structures with different setbacks and other criteria. So, we actually added in flexibility by making this change. So, Section 3 will now read, "The total maximum combined square footage of all accessory structures on any lot in the R1, R2, PRMU, Conservation District, R3, and RMU zoning district that is less than one acre in size shall be 1,200 square feet. On lots greater than one acre in size, the maximum square footage allowed shall be 1,500 square feet. Additional square footage must be approved by the Board of Adjustment as a conditional use, and additional setbacks and screening requirements may apply." The next section deals with accessory structures on vacant lots. So, that's one of the things that we wanted to allow, because we're quite positive that we will probably issue 30 to 50 of these permits a year. Here's how that reads, for the record. "Accessory structures will not be permitted on vacant lots without a primary structure unless the lot is two acres or larger. The maximum combined square footage allowed for all accessory structures in this case is 1,500 square feet. All other applicable regulations will apply. In such cases, the accessory structure shall have a minimum setback of 80 feet from the front right-of-way or edge of pavement where no right-of-way exists. Screening shall be required between the structure and adjacent properties where existing vegetation or distance is insufficient to provide adequate screening. Screening shall consist of a 10-foot opaque evergreen hedge row. Accessory structures on vacant residential lots may be used for storage purposes only. Only electric service may be provided to the accessory storage structure. Water and septic shall not be permitted." And I know that was a mouthful, so I'm going to stop for a minute and ask if you gentlemen need any clarification on that.
Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. Scott, is anyone here that'd like to speak to?
I'm not done yet, sir.
Oh, you're not done yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
I just thought this was a sort of a lot to digest as I'm-
It was.
-moving through.
Keep going.
I will keep going, sir. So, Section 1103 deals with the accessory dwelling units that I mentioned earlier. "A detached accessory dwelling unit may be permitted as an accessory use on lots with an existing primary dwelling. Accessory dwellings are not required to meet the same lot size requirements as other second dwelling units." So, before, when we were allowing another dwelling unit to come on a lot, and say you were zoned R2 and didn't have water or sewer, you would have to have another .70 acre to add the dwelling unit, even if it was just for to take care of somebody. Standards for the accessory dwelling units are as follows. A, the accessory dwelling unit and the primary dwelling must be owned by the same person. No more than one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a single-deeded lot in conjunction with the primary dwelling unit. Accessory dwellings shall be connected to the same electrical, water, and wastewater disposal system as the primary dwelling, when practical. Accessory dwelling units utilizing a private septic system must comply with all requirements of the County Division of Environmental Health for on-site sewage and well regulations. Accessory dwellings are limited to 650 square feet of gross floor area. Accessory dwellings must be constructed to current North Carolina State Residential Building Code standards and must receive a certificate of occupancy prior to being inhabited. Accessory dwelling units must be located to the side or rear of the primary dwelling and meet all applicable setbacks. Accessory dwellings are to be constructed of like materials and must resemble the primary structure in appearance to the greatest extent possible. Unless the accessory dwelling unit is accessed from a different road or street than the primary dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit must share a driveway with the primary dwelling. No off-street parking is permitted for accessory dwellings. And last, we added 1103.04 Temporary Structures, and it states, "Temporary structures may be permitted in any zoning when used in conjunction with construction work or when permitted for a temporary event." And as far as the table for allowing these goes, these will be an allowed use in all of the resid, all zoning districts that allow residential uses.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing. Is anyone here that'd like to speak to ZTA 2015-01? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentleman, questions for Scott on-
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Scott, you say accessory dwelling unit, and then you say a garage apartment or a guest house. Those are the only two things. And what's your definition of a guest house? I think we talked after the meeting, and I'm concerned about this national phenomenon with small homes, but they're on wheels, but they meet all the criteria with kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping space. They pull them in, they take the wheels off and put them on a foundation, and, I mean, they look like, they're a small home. They're like 400, 500 square, not even that much.
They are a small home, and as a matter of fact, our ordinance now, we do not dictate how big a home can be on a lot. So, you could bring on a 400, 500-square-foot home now. The problem that you have in North Carolina that we're finding, we had this discussion this morning with the building inspectors, nobody is quite sure how these things are going to be permitted. In other words, if you have an RV park model, there's a sticker on it. If you have a mobile home, there's a sticker or an approval on it. As far as things being made to modular units, the only ones that are made are being done in double-wide-type facilities and built, and then there's paperwork that signifies that that's what they are.
Not necessarily.
They're supposed to.
Some of them are just built in a garage, but garage, and they're building two or three of them at a time, not really a mobile home facility. I know it's going to hit us, because, I mean, it's going all over the country, this phenomenon with this small building with young couples, and I, it's going to hit us, and while we're doing this, I don't see why, I don't know what your definition of a guest house is, but to me, that would qualify as a guest house. Even a park model, to me, would qualify as a guest house, but then it comes under a mobile home park, I think, or whatever. But I, when we say guest house definition.
So- Page under your 10, excuse me, 1103-3 answers that question. It says, "They'll be constructed of like material and must resemble primary structure in appearance and to the greatest extent possible."
They do. They do, 100% what you're saying. They meet that criteria.
So, to clarify, guest house, a guest house would not be a standalone house on an individual lot. It would be, it could be one of these units, limited to 650 square feet, but that guest house could also be used as a mother-in-law, father-in-law type of sleep-
So, you're saying a guest house has to be connected to the other house?
Doesn't have to be. It can stand alone on the lot, but it should be designed to look like the primary structure.
But small homes do look like a primary structure.
Separate use. Those are individual, single-family homes that happen to be tiny.
I just think while we're going to the trouble of doing this, it's going to hit us, I mean, very soon, somebody's, there's going to be people that want to build these, and it's going to hit us sometime or whatever.
We allow those now. It's just that nobody has been bringing them.
So, is guest house, can a guest house be considered a small home net?
No, sir, because the guest house is an accessory to the primary residential dwelling unit.
This would be an accessory too, the way I look at it.
Well, not necessarily. The small home could be brought on and be utilized as a separate dwelling, but that's not what this amendment's doing.
Counsel, what are, what is your interpretation of a guest house?
Well, a guest house would have to be associated with a primary structure.
But he said it doesn't have to be attached.
Right, it would not.
So, why would a small home be an accessory structure?
Well, if it was being used as a guest house, it could be.
Now, I'm really confused.
It would have to be on the same water system, the same septic system, the same electrical system-
That'd be easy. That'd be easy to do that.
And then it's an accessory too, and it's limited in size.
Yeah, all right.
I think what you're thinking about, yes, is all these small homes. So, Asheville has these going on because of Asheville's culture, so to say. We will be actually meeting with their chief building inspector, because apparently, he's the only one in the state that is aware of these things, and they're developing criteria to address them. For everybody else, and my inspectors were just at the statewide conference, everybody had their hands in the air, wondering, "How are we going to deal with these tiny houses that show up, and how are they permitted?" And so, we deal with this with RV park models all the time. People are wanting to bring those RV park models and live in them as an accessory dwelling unit, but they don't comply with the state law. You can't live in an RV. So, that's why the RV park models aren't allowed. You could have something the same size as an RV park model that's allowed, which is what we're doing here, but it has to be built to state building code. It could look exactly the same on the outside. So-
I think I see one of the places Wayne's going, Mr. Chairman.
Go right here.
And I wouldn't agree with that either. There's a lot of pre-manufactured housing companies out there, and you can buy a million-dollar house that's pre-manufactured. We've got one in the eastern part of the county that's about $350,000, and they, they pre-manufacture them and bring them in. But I think what I would, was thinking on Wayne's comment there, I wouldn't want a, and I hate to use this word, but mobile homes set up and declared as an accessory house.
But these don't look like mobile homes. They look like real homes.
Mobile homes are not allowed-
Yeah.
-as accessory. As a matter of fact, a gentleman came in today, and he was looking at putting a single-wide on his land in R2 zoning district, which doesn't allow single wides. What's the perfect answer to his situation is this. It's this dwelling unit being built because he didn't qualify because of his lot size for the single-wide or his zoning, but this would have been allowed, you see? So, even today, this could have been an option for somebody that came in. So, the trick is going to be with, with these things and with the small houses, it's going to be identifying what is built to state building code and ensuring that there is an engineer's stamp on those plans. The legislature has passed legislation also, I think it's passed, I'm pretty sure it has, that is going to allow engineers who stamp plans to bypass the local review of building inspectors for approval of plans. And if they stamp it and say, "Yes, it is built to state building code standards, we have to allow it," that's the type of thing we're probably going to be doing with the small houses and other units, is ensuring that somebody has said, "Yep, it meets it."
So, Scott, I guess what we're saying, it's too early yet in the state of North Carolina. They haven't encountered this yet, and they haven't had a chance to make an ordinance or whatever at this time.
They haven't on the small houses, but what they've said is that unless you are trying to dictate or determine how big of a minimum-size house is, then if it's built to state building code, then it can go in.
All right.
And we don't dictate how much house somebody can have in Burke County. So, we're different than the cities. And the other thing is, these accessory dwelling units, very similar to this, these are in many cities around the state and around the country, and they're allowed in many counties because they add flexibility to your housing stock. They allow opportunities for other things to happen, kids to come home from school that couldn't find jobs. They allow even, you can even rent these, I guess, if you had to, but you could also take care of somebody who's sick, and they're not going to be, you know, transitory or problematic as far as I can tell.
All right, any other questions or explanation?
Mr. Chairman, I've asked a lot of questions at pre-agenda too, but I did note something that I'd like a little explanation on. Under Section 1103 dot O3 dot 1, your last item on there, item J, if I was writing this, changing this and amending it, I don't understand the no off-street parking. Should that not be no street parking? Because if you don't park off the street, you're going to park on the street.
That should be.
Is that a typo?
That is. That, I think, that's a good catch. I believe you're exactly correct.
Okay, so you need to drop off, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the zoning text amendment proposed by the community development staff to amend Section 402, definition Section 920, schedule of permitted and permissible uses by district and section be adopted. To adopt ordinance 2015, they show eight, amending the Burke County zoning ordinance in reference to zoning text amendment ZTA 2015-01, and adopt the following statement. I'll read that if you like. Mr. Carpenter, you didn't read that exactly, so, from what I could tell. I will read it. Number one, the amendment, I'll start at the beginning. "The zoning text amendment proposed by the county community development staff to amend Section 402, definition Section 920, schedule of permitted and permissible uses by district in Section 1103. Accessory and temporary structures of the Burke County zoning ordinance is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and is reasonable and in the public interest because..." Do we need these three read also? Yes, Madam Clerk. "The amendment will provide an allowance for accessory storage structures on vacant land if certain conditions are met. Number two, the text amendment will bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the new state legislation requirement for temporary health care structures for medical hardships. Number three, the amendment will provide an allowance for accessory residential dwelling units on the same lot with primary dwellings without meeting the additional lot area requirement." That's Section 1001.
Thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen, you've heard Jeff's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that passes five to nothing. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Scott. Moving on to item number eight is our informal public comments. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have one speaker tonight, Ms. Laurie Bradshaw.
Ms. Bradshaw, if you'll come to the podium over there, please, ma'am.
Yes, my name's Laurie Bradshaw, and I'm the mother of an adult son with developmental disabilities, along with being deaf. I had an experience which I would like to bring to light. On 2/28 of this year, I fell at Ingalls Grocery Store. I was injured enough that I had to be taken to a local hospital. Upon the arrival of the EMTs, they asked a store employee to go through my pocketbook, get my identification, and give it to them, then they left my pocketbook with the store employee. I understood what they needed to know, or why they needed to know who I was. What was more important is that when EMTs transferred me to the hospital- What was more important is that when EMTs transferred me to the hospital, they left my pocketbook with the store employee, but more importantly, they left my deaf disabled son at the grocery store. My son was greatly upset and confused, not understanding what was happening to his mother and why he was being taken away, she was being taken away, and he was being left behind with basically no one to comfort or watch over him. And one of the EMTs knew my son as she rode my school bus at mall school for three years. So she knew his, was very special needs. So I just do not understand why that EMT did not either stay with my son until family or friends could arrive, or they could have easily transported him with me to the hospital until someone could get to him. My husband was contacted by the hospital when I came conscious enough to tell him where he worked and he went, they told him to go to the store and get my son first, that they were having to pack me up to send me to Charlotte. And, but to get my son first because I was freaking out. And, but it was not a safe environment for him. And, not that this type of incident happens often, but I strongly believe there needs to be a policy put in place so that no person, whether disabled or being a child, is left behind with strangers while their parents are being transported to a medical facility. The result of my being left behind has put anxiety and fear in him every time we go to the store where the incident happened. With one of the EMTs knowing my son, it seems logical that that EMT should have stayed with my son to assure him that all would be okay whether she stayed with him at the store or transported him to the hospital with me. I'm asking for further consideration and review of the policies be done and changes to be made that an incident like this will not result in a child or a disabled person being left behind when a parent is being transported to the hospital. This is and it has caused great anxiety and concern. This is a situation that could easily happen again to another family with a young child or a disabled family member with developmental disabilities. We need to remember that many persons with developmental disabilities have the mind of a child and should be treated as such, giving comfort, helping to reduce tension, anxiety. They may be feeling and reassuring and all will be okay until a family member or a friend can arrive to take care of them. In leaving my disabled son at the store, it has put a considerable amount of stress on my husband as he had to first go to the store to get Christopher, then come to the hospital where he could check on me, where I was being treated for a head trauma and bleeding. And knowing that my son was left behind caused even further stress and worry on me, the injured parent. This is why it is most important to have EMT policies and procedures reviewed and revised so that no other parent will have to endure the most emotional trauma of their child, whether disabled or not, being left behind with strangers. I ask you to sit down and have further conversations on incidents such as this and to put procedures in place so that this does not happen again. And I bring my concerns to you because I have had several conversations with the director of Burke EMS and I get nothing from him but excuses. He said, if they'd have taken five minutes to put my son in the ambulance, I could have died, but they took more than five minutes to have a stranger go through my pocketbook, get out my ID, and then leave my purse, my credit cards, everything with the store employee. My son was there for over two hours. So I ask you to please, thank you for listening to my concerns, and I pray that you will take my concerns seriously and take steps to prevent something like this from happening again. Because I have contacted Disability Rights of North Carolina and they are looking into the American Disabilities Act and they think that I may have a case against Burke County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. But now move on to item number nine, the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Bronstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have a lengthy consent agenda. Number one, BOC, NACO stepping up resolution. Number two, clerk removal from library board of trustees. Number three, clerk Commerce Fellows, CDBG project ordinance. Number four, county manager, Greater Hickory, MPO amended memorandum of understanding. Number five, EMS, HGAC by inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing. Number six, general services, Anna Street, CDBG progress report. Number seven, JCPC, appointment of police chief designee. Number eight, tax department order to collect 2015 taxes. Number nine, tax department collections annual settlement report for 2014 slash 2015. Number 10, tax department release refund report for July 2015. Number 11, tax department tax collections report for July 2015. And item 12, tax department EMS collections report for June 2015. That concludes your consent agenda item.
Alright, gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, you've heard Wayne's motions. All in favor signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Wayne. Moving on to items for decision, the first item for decision by the county manager is a resolution in support of an indoor firing range in Burke County. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you've had the state come before us and into county talking about the placement of a possible firing range. And in both locations they've been, there's been some opposition to that. We have provided a resolution for you to consider adopting tonight that is in support of an indoor firing range here in Burke County. Mr. Chairman, if you want me to read the resolution, I will. If not, I'll let the board act on it.
I think we've all had time to read it. Gentlemen, any questions for Brian on the resolution in support of an indoor firing range?
I just think we need to note, Mr. Chairman, that we don't really have a say in this. We can recommend to the state, but it's a state decision and no matter what we do, how we recommend, the state's gonna do what they wanna do. But this is probably the best choice for the citizens that we've heard from over the last three months. And whether that'll happen, I don't know.
Any other comments or questions for Brian on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we should, I think the best, best thing would be indoor range to ask for, but I don't think we should close the door on an open range if the wildlife can find a place to put it other than what they have looked at before. But a 25-yard indoor range, I think would suffice. I think that when in Catawba County, you can shoot weapons there up to 50 caliber. So I think it would do the job, but I don't know if the Wildlife Commission would go along with that, depending on how much it costs, I guess. But I don't think we should close the door on an open range either.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to comment on a couple of things I fully support. I would love to see an indoor shooting range and especially up at our industrial park. But I do have a concern or two here that we are, the Board of Commissioners strongly supports the concept of having and encourages, and I think that we need to be careful how we say those things. And then in the next, be it further resolved, we'll work diligently, collaboratively with the wildlife and make an indoor firing range a reality in Burke County. Are we with those state, with those two statements saying we are willing to add money to the issue or to make it happen was one of the question. And then the other whereas I think would be good to add, I like that article, but should we, so we do not close any doors, as Jack mentioned, say whereas if the wildlife finds another location that an open range would fit well, we would also entertain that. And that's, that's my only two concerns.
Brian?
Well, we haven't mentioned money in here. We've just said that we would work diligently and collaboratively with the Wildlife Department to make that a range a reality. I didn't feel comfortable putting anything in there that we're gonna provide or appropriate money. We're certainly willing to work with them within the range that the board is comfortable. I don't know, sometimes you can put too many things in the pot and the soup doesn't come out well. So I don't know if the board wants to add language or delete language. It's whatever the board would like us to do, we'll be glad to do that. But the purpose was more or less, and again, as Wayne said, this is not a decision for the board. This is the wildlife folks and we know that they've been to two locations about an outdoor range. And in both locations, you had people in that immediate area, I say immediate, within what they call hearing distance, oppose the outdoor range. But nobody from the hearings that I went to seemed to have any opposition to a indoor range. And again, it's, you know, how broad do you wanna go? And we'll be glad to incorporate it in the resolution. But again, it ultimately becomes the North Carolina Wildlife's decision.
Yeah, I don't mind the resolution and the wording, as long as we feel like we're not saying to them we are at this point willing to help build it with financial funds or something. I know that, I, I read the articles in the paper and I hear the radio news and they said a lot of people opposed to it. I went to both meetings. The last one for Johns River location, there was nine, four, and 12 against. And I don't know, I have, I don't know how many signatures here that says people would love to have it and it's, I mean, it's thousands of names. So somehow or another, we need to, to do a system that we get an equal share of what, you know, who wants it and who doesn't want it. I think that when you consider only the ones that spoke at the meetings, you didn't include the signatures, that's kind of a silent voice that did not get included. And with that, I'll shut up. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to ask you to consider developing a letter to send along to the Wildlife Commission, probably give us some more information as to, you know, we do just support a range of any type that they can build and agreeable with all the peoples in the neighborhood. And I think that would give them more incentive, you know, to take a look at other areas.
Any other comments about the current resolution that's before us?
Mr. Chairman, I would just note, one of the wheres is it does state that the range is a project that is solely funded and managed by the state of North Carolina. So that, in my mind, kinda makes it clear that we're, we understand who it belongs That's up several points from the beginning.
Good point. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just one other final note. This was going to be a $250,000 grant, or not a grant, $250,000 gift is what I meant to say, to Burke County. And I sure hate that they see us as not interested and we don't accept that $250,000 gift.
Point well noted. Alright, anything else?
I, I guess, I'm concerned that state builds it. There's nobody out there. I'm very familiar with one in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. There's nobody manning it. People out there that never shot a pistol or rifle before, they're out there without the state manning it or somebody there, and they just build a range and walk away from it and say, here's your range. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Anyone else? Alright, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the resolution that's in front of us today?
Chairman, it's up to me. I think we just oughta take that off the agenda. I'm only one person speaking now.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the resolution and forward it to the Wildlife Commission.
Alright, you've heard Manier's motion. All in favor of the resolution in support signify by raising your right hands. All opposed, that'd be four to one, Madam Clerk. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our next item for decision, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to relinquish the chair to you as this involves the Big League Little League World Series All-Stars because I do have a, a child in my custody that plays on that team and I'm gonna recuse myself totally from this matter.
Well, as you can see tonight, we had a special proclamation honoring these young ladies. And I know it's a Burke County team, I'm sorry, not a Burke County team, but a Morganton team. But when I first picked up the paper and read that the city of Morganton through the recreation fund was gonna put in $15,000 to help with expenses on that, I felt like, well, Burke County, we ought, we oughta be there at the table right away. And even though it's not a Burke County team, it's girls from Burke County and whatever, and I think they've done wonderful. I think anything that you invest in youth, especially in a recreation program like this and the quality of the young ladies, I have no trouble taking and hoping that we could put up to $10,000 in reimbursement. And we might not have to spend that much, but up to $10,000 to, a lot of these parents that went, they couldn't afford to go, they, they lost work and whatever rooms, the travel and everything else. But I think we were wonderful, really represented wonderfully by these young ladies. I think we're all proud of them and we spend money sometimes like drunken sailors and I don't think $10,000 is gonna make a big difference. And the amount I'm talking about is up to $10,000. Other comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. There's several things that's really wrong with this motion or this suggestion. First of all, you have to realize that Morganton Recreation budget is $4,986,000 and $906. In round figures, $5,000,000. Burke County's budget for Parks and Recreation is $545,550. In other words, Morganton's recreation budget is 10 times the budget of Burke County. In talking with Trey Allen, I tried several times to get ahold of Norman Houston, who taught this stuff to Kay and Johnny and myself and Brian. There's a conflict of interest with this, let alone the huge difference in the money. In talking to Trey, he says you can't do that. I said, you get your attorney, and I'm sorry, JR, I did not get this call back till right at 15 to 5. There's a statutory rule that says the county cannot give tax dollars to another taxing entity like a city. If they need money, they can tax and get their money. He also said that if you've got a member on the commission board whose child, grandchild lives with him, plays with him, he should be excused from voting because you're crossing the ethic rules to do that. It's just a bad president, you know. I, I left an email to some of you, didn't leave it to all. You know, we had bands go to New York, we got bands going to Hawaii with hundreds, literally hundreds, of people going. And, you know, we don't recognize them. And then you got the conflict and where this is a Morganton entity, not a Burke County entity, and their rules are different than ours, but it's kinda hideous that in Burke County rules, you can only play in the school zone that you're in. Anyone can get the top players in an area and, you know, have a greater chance of winning and so forth. It's just a very bad omen, not only to this board, it's a, it's a bad omen for the taxpayers. And it's a very bad omen for the Parks and Recreation. and it's a very bad omen for the Parks and Recreation and their rules.
Anybody else?
Mr. Vice Chair, my only concern is we don't have a policy that would allow us to make it very clear how we would handle this kind of thing in the future, you know, what we've done in the past. You know, if we had a clear cut, you know, if you're, you know, a Burke County team and this happens, or you're Burke County, you know, banned or extracurricular or whatever, this is what the county can do. I'm just very concerned that we don't have, you know, we're just picking one here and making a decision, but yet I can see many others coming down the road that would feel like, well, you should, you know, do something for our whatever. And so my concern is, you know, if we were going to go down this road, we ought to have something that's very clear of what we can do and what this board feels like we can do financially as well.
And Jeff, I agree with that, but these things just come up once in a while, and I mean, this thing just came upon us so fast that, you know, I don't think we have policy, and like you say, the bans or whatever, but we really don't have any policy. But again, this has just come up, you know, and I just think, you know, they represented both Morganton and the county well, and, you know, I don't think $10,000, up to $10,000 is going to kill us one way or the other.
I guess my concern is what happens next week when...
Well, I agree, but we don't have any policy. Maybe this will force us to have policy or whatever.
Well, actually, what we should do is start a dialogue with all municipalities that has Parks and Recreation to see if they would be interested in consolidating all those facilities into one in the county. If you did that, then we wouldn't have an issue come up like this, and that would be a county department or whoever would accept it. And Morganton in the past has led me to believe that they would like to have that. So that's my issue with it, and then, of course, I agree with Jeff. How many people will look at this and say, well, okay, you did it for them, and we can't turn them down, I don't think, or shouldn't anyway. He'll be asking for money in the future, so, bad petition.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that, you know, we're asking each other to do something that just has all kinds of ethical questions, fairness questions, and I don't think there's a person sitting at this table that knows that Morganton can find $10,000 out of $4986, $4,986,000, a lot sooner than Burke County could find it out of our budget. And it's just, I mean, it's just really hideous that we're even considering this. I'm sorry, it's just, it's asinine that we would take taxpayer dollars and pay where we shouldn't have to.
Mr. Attorney, any comment on ethics of this, sir?
Well, the statute provides that if a member's own financial interest or official conduct is a subject of voting, then that, the board may excuse that member from voting.
What about the county putting money, taxpayer money into something like this?
Well, I've not been asked to look at that, and I'll be glad to, but off the top of my head, if it's a nonprofit entity doing something for the county that the county could do for itself but has chosen not to or has otherwise not entered that field, then I think they have that ability. I'll be glad to hear what Mr. Taylor's fellow at the IOG had to say about that and give you a further opinion.
You had that, Maynard, or?
The one...
Did you have Attorney General's?
He said the attorney would know that statute number. I can get it for you.
I told you the statute I'm aware of, and that's 153A44.
Well, you're, the statute you're reading is on the ethics and not on the statutory rules that, you know, a county can't give a city taxpayer money that they collected from taxpayers. He says all this other stuff is irrelevant because you're breaking that rule.
Well, it's my understanding that money isn't going to the city, that money would be going to a recreation foundation.
That's still tax money going to an entity that collects taxes. The argument is that City of Morganton has the power to raise taxes if they need more taxes.
This is the foundation.
But if they have a separately organized recreation foundation with private membership, then it's a...
The foundation is an entity of Morganton City, correct?
I don't know.
I don't either. Foundation's been there for years and years. But with that, let's go ahead and call a vote on that. I guess, not going to change minds. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You need a motion first.
I'm sorry, I motioned...
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we do not participate and reimburse the expense for $10,000 to the City of Morganton.
All those in favor of Maynard's motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like signs, so it's three to one. All right, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Moving on to the next item, Ms. Community Development Resolution in Support of Application to the 2016 Recreational Trails Program. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. First, I'd like to apologize to Madam Clerk and our manager for the lateness of this resolution, but essentially, last year, we were working on the Lake James Luke Trail master plan, and when we finished that, we thought that we would build a section of trail and that we would start it, and it would be a 2.66 mile trail from Fish Hatchery Road, where the county park land is, over to the existing terminus of the Mountains to the Sea Trail Connector. So what we wanted to do, of course, was to connect the Mountains to the Sea Trail to the county park. We wanted to move forward doing that with the bridge crew, volunteers, county staff, different groups in order that we don't lose energy as we moved along. But we have lost some energy because it turns out that the bridge crew, which are firefighters, have been flying all over the country and out west, Alaska and California, being dropped on the fire lines. And so the other thing I learned is, they don't have great trail building skills. Turns out that what they do when they go out to help is they clear a fire line. So they just scrape off the four or five inches of natural surface, and that's the trail. So it's not built to sustainable design standards, and they're not digging trail tread and all that type of thing. So Tim Johnson with State Trails has been helping Burke County through our process of getting a trail around Lake James as well as connecting other trails, and he suggested that we apply for the 2016 Recreational Trails Program. The reason that this is coming to you so late is because they have a process that requires you to do a pre-application, and then you have to wait to hear back from them before you can actually apply for the grant. Well, we didn't hear back until the 1st of August, and the grant is due the 1st of September, which is after your next meeting. So we needed, it turned out, to ask you all for a resolution to support this $70,000 grant request. Our match on that will be $17,500, but the good thing about this grant is it does allow for in-kind contributions, and so we can use volunteer labor and planning staff and other hours that we've been planning the trail. So we've already documented over $4,500 in just planning time for the trail. The bridge crew will round this out very quickly. You're reimbursed, what you get to use is $21.50 an hour for every bridge crew member. So there's seven on the team, so you're at $150 more or less an hour, so you're at $6, $750 every day that bridge crew comes out. The other thing we're doing with this grant is, we have a couple of Boy Scouts who need projects, and we plan on using the bridges that need to be built here for their Eagle Scout projects, and that way it would be under good guidance and that kind of thing. So we expect that this resolution, and if you support this, that this will not cost the county a dime, and hopefully we'll be able to get this money to connect the existing Mountains to the Sea Trail where it terminates into the county park, which is part of the larger plan, and that will also connect it in to the Fawn and Flora State Trail at the county park. If you would like, I can read this resolution. If not, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go ahead and see if we've got any questions to start with. Gentlemen? All right, no questions. Scott, quickly read your resolution.
Thank you, sir. This is a resolution in support of application to the 2016 Recreational Trails Program, whereas the North Carolina State Trails Program administered by the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation is tasked with distributing funds from the 2016 Recreational Trails Program, and whereas the North Carolina Trails Committee invited Burke County to apply for funds for the Fawn and Flora State Trail, and more specifically, the Fawn and Flora State Trail Mountains to the Sea Trail Connector, and whereas in order to receive funds, Burke County is required to provide a 25% match or $17,500 to the requested amount of $70,000, and this match may be met through money's in-kind contributions, volunteer labor, and staff planning hours. Now, therefore, the Burke County Board of Commissioners resolved to support the application to the 2016 Recreational Trails Program and provide the 25% match through either money's in-kind contribution, volunteer labor, staff planning hours, or any other acceptable methods in accordance with the program.
All right, you've heard the resolution. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-17.
All right, gentlemen, thank you, Maynard. You've heard Maynard's motions. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Five, nothing, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, moving on to our reports and comments. Our first item will be Chris Hallifield, General Services Director, to speak to us about a request for a water extension along Highway NC 18 South. Chris?
Good evening, gentlemen and madam. I presented this at the pre-agenda meeting. This is what I coined as the donut hole between River Road and Shoup's Way along Highway 18 South. I will recognize a group on, behind Mr. Carpenter here, which I'll call the Mace Family for right now, if that's okay. This is Ms. Wisna and her brothers. They have, Ms. Wisna, of course, you know well, she spoke to you several times, and spoke to me quite a lot about the need for water in their area. They are, as Commissioner Britton mentioned in a pre-agenda, they are on the southern end of this donut hole, and I was asked to do, you asked me a lot of questions at the pre-agenda, so some of those I have answers to, and one of those I have a dollar figure to, which I provided. We will, I'll talk about those in a minute, but I want to back up and talk about some of the questions you asked me that I did some research on. First, I don't remember which board member it was, but somebody asked why that wasn't done when the CDBG grant was in place years ago, we'll call it. David Poore, who was the engineer on that job, I spent some time with David since our last meeting, and he said it simply was down to the fact that it's a very rocky terrain underground there, the soil conditions are very rocky, and sparse conditions, and the cost was exorbitant to do it. So he said, that's why it didn't get done. It wasn't included in the CDBG because there wasn't enough, and they felt like the conditions were too rough. That answers the question perhaps of why it didn't get done, but more importantly, before you is a quote for exactly what Commissioner Britton mentioned at the pre-agenda, which was, there's two options we could go here, several options, but the two major ones, we could fill the gap, which is 21,000 linear feet of pipe. That connects and allows us to connect two tanks, be a nice engineering plus for us to have for water quality, certainly isn't required to serve the Mace area. The second option would be a 4,000 linear foot water line extension from River Road headed north to just get to the Mace property, which will allow us to close some of the gap. We'd be under 20,000 feet of line needed at that point to close up the whole donut hole, and we'd be able to serve the Mace family properties with water. So what I provided for you is a quote, or is an estimate, excuse me, based on real contract numbers that West is seeing right now in the field for eight-inch ductile iron pipe. And if you remember back to the original quote, to fill the entire line from beginning to end, to fill the void, was roughly 1.3 million. If, I went back and did the math, and I quickly did it, I think, on my phone in pre-agenda and came up with about $300,000. I think it'd be a little better than that, but from safety's sake, my estimate there, including valves and hydrants and service line and fittings and all the necessity of purposes you need to complete the job, I've come up with a contingency engineering fees and everything included at $316,000. I think it'll be a little less than that, probably under $300,000 to do the job. Now, with that all being said, I had conversations just over the last 24 hours with folks at the COG. Somebody on the board, Too Much Time, Too Much Water in the Bridge, mentioned that I should open that conversation again, which I did. Leah Martin called me today and said she is working on a Deener granted funded grant that would provide water to the Parker Industries area of Roney Road that we looked at in the past, the last cycle, with regard to a tag grant was not applicable. They've changed the rules a little bit, and she, that's been opened up again. When I was on the phone with her, I said, you know, that's a fine project to do, it's a really small project, it wouldn't be near, you know, 2 million, which is the limit on that grant, it wouldn't be near that amount. What's the chance you could do two non-contiguous projects at the same time that would be inside the $2 million window? And she said, that's a great question. I described the place to her, she knew it well from the original CDBG grant, and she said, I'll phone the people at Deener and ask the question. So I hope by tomorrow she'll have me an answer. I have not heard from her as of this last five minutes on my email. I hope she'll have a question, I answer that question tomorrow as to whether or not you can do two underneath the $2 million grant umbrella that would be non-contiguous. That would give us another option. You could say, hey, we want to fund this $300,000 extension and try to get the grant. If we get it, we're all the better. If not, we could do it this way if you choose to, you could choose not to do it, of course. I think with the match, if you go the full $2 million on the grant, the match would still be less than what it would cost us to do a 4,000-foot extension just for the Mace family. So that puts us in a little bit of a catbird seat, if you will, if we were to get the grant. Lots of ifs. Timeline is another thing. I think that deadline on Madam Clerk, that thing's coming up like quick. So that's another if. Those are some ifs, some things that happened over the last 24 hours that could possibly change the scenario.
All right, questions for Chris?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, if I understand your graph here, that if you do 4,000 feet of pipe, you have four customers, is that correct?
I think there's five homes right near you. Is that right, or four?
And at a cost of $315,000, how long does it take for us to recap?
There's a sawmill as well, so five, six customers. I have 16 years before I can retire in the local government system. I think you, I don't think, it's not, it's not a fiscal decision, certainly. It wouldn't be fiscally responsible to do it. If you do this, it's because it's the right thing to do. You know, we have customers in between our service area, and if we don't serve them, they won't get service from a corporate water.
The 4,000-foot, as I understand it... The 4,000-foot, as I understand it, does not complete the connection of the two lines.
That's right. It's 21,000 feet total. 4,000 would put us under 20,000 feet to connect, so we'd still have 19 left, or 18 left, excuse me.
Have you spoken with the Buckner family on the other end, on the north side?
No, sir. I have a, I think I mentioned before, I have a old petition that has their names on it, several families, two or three families, I believe, on that. Two or three Buckner names are on that list. Now, that's 10, 12 years old.
Yeah. Okay, my question is, I understand where the Maces live. Do we know how many more, and the Maces may help me understand, how many more families are beyond the Maces up to this end?
Yeah, if we have, and I have an interest in pursuing it further with the grant, I'm going to do a survey on Thursday with the COG, with Leah Martin. I think you'd, we'd be hard pressed, help me, Ed, if I'm wrong, I think we'd be hard pressed to find 10 residents, true residences between those two points. Is that about right? Shoops Way and River Road. Does that sound about right, 10? 10 or 15? Yeah, no more, certainly no more than 15. You know, the chances that you'd get every one of those certainly is not guaranteed.
So, for right now, your suggestion is, or recommendation is, sit tight to your, you hear from Western Piedmont Council Governor?
Yeah, I'd like to know if that's possible, if we have an interest in doing the grant. That's another question. Do you have an interest in doing that? That'd be an extension on a separate point to Parker Industries, which we visited last cycle, and then looping in, if they are okay to do it, the project here on, and I think that, let me back up and say too, I think that if we loop in both of these projects together, non-contiguous, if they're okay with that, under $2 million, we could actually do the entire Highway 18 South donut hole, which would take care of the customer base, would also take care of a system issue with us. I think that'd be less than $2 million, and the leftover, I believe, would be enough to make the connection to Parker. So, I think it'd be the best of both worlds.
I think what you said, it's the right thing to do if we can do it, but I don't think any of us sitting up here are realizing what these citizens are going through with this water. They're buying water to cook. The water stinks, it's black. I mean, I don't think any of us sitting up here, and I haven't really heard anybody else come forward in the county in a while and tell me that their water's the same, but I know their water is just awful out there. It's just awful.
There are, there's paralel streets, and when I've been on the docket for six, eight years.
But I think if we can do it, it's the right decision.
Take just a moment and go over some of the figures, if you have those with you, that we heard this morning about the evaporation is what is causing the contaminants in the wells right now?
Sure, yeah. Chairman and myself were part of the Water Board meeting for Burke County. With most every water corporation represented, I think Ikerd and Morganton, the only two not, and I know Jason's on vacation from Morganton, not sure where John Pons was, but with those, the exceptions, those two, everybody else was represented there. And Kevin Greer from Hickory did a nice job describing what's going on. And if you've watched the news in California, you see an astronomical figure that only, probably only could exist in California. They've, for about 10 years ago, they came out with an idea that you could put a HDPE PVC plastic ball that would float on top of water, color it black, it would absorb the heat, not transfer it to the water, and keep the water in a raw reservoir from evaporating out. They have spent, I saw on the news this week, three, it's a staggering number, $300 million on this, it's sort of like these bouncy ball huts for children to play in, that kind of ball, to cover raw water reservoirs in the state of California, simply to protect evaporation because their water is that precious. They have so few resources and water left in California, they're willing to spend that crazy kind of money to protect from an evaporation. So, what, I think what the folks are seeing, not just the Mace family, but out in the county in the whole, anybody that has a well, if your well becomes compromised, meaning it, the volume goes down, the supply goes down, it certainly wants to pull water in from the aquifer. That's how it works. As it gets lower, it winds up pulling in minerals and algae, it can pull in bacteria, of course, you have to watch for those sort of things. Iron is, certainly is causing them some problems. I know from my history with Ms. Wisna, you know, turn your t-shirts, a white shirt like Commissioner Carroll has on, turn it orange, and has a very metallic taste in when you drink it. It's not very pleasant to drink. And that happens when your well, the supply and the water table goes down, it's trying to pull water in to a void in the well, and it winds up pulling those minerals in with it.
And if I recall, Kevin told us in the Catawba Watery System, every day above 90, we lose 400 million gallons of water to evaporation.
Correct. In lakes, because there's so many lakes in the city, rivers and lakes. That's right.
All right, and so you're looking for direction from us tonight, and I think, I don't want to speak for anybody, are we asking to wait until we hear from the COG and see what the COG says about the grant?
I don't think we have any choice but to wait till we hear from the COG.
I thought this was a report, there was no decision to be made.
There's no decision, he's asking for direction today. So, I think the direction, I think if I'm understanding everybody correctly, is that we, you come back with us when you hear what you hear from the COG about the grant for that project and see if there's anything else that we can do. Obviously, 1.3 million for 10 or 15 customers is something that would have to be considered a lot. Is that good direction for you? Is that satisfactory?
Yes, I should know whether or not it's possible within the week.
Okay.
I'll follow back through the email chain.
How far is Parker out there, Industries? How far are we going to have to run to get out to Parker? I know that's been an ongoing thing with Parker.
It's a few thousand feet. It's not, not near the, you know, 4,000 feet would get us up to the Mace family. It's roughly similar to that. I don't think it's over 10,000 feet, which definitely less than half of the donut hole. And they have similar problems if, though the folks out at BDI went with me and the COG went with me to visit them, several, in that area, if you know the area well, it's very rural. Most of the folks that live around Parker work at Parker. And they, just person after person after person, they kept mentioning, "Well, Jerry works here, and his well is bad in this area, contaminated with iron. Bill works here. I live next door to the plant, my well's bad." Just similar situations. The water table's dropped, people's well compromised, they can't count on it in most cases. And if they can, it's, if the water's there, it's generally not appetizing to use.
Mr. Chairman, may I make another comment? Maybe a request, Chris. Chris, my brother and nephew had to dig three wells for chicken houses. Finally got lucky and hit one at 55 gallon a minute. But my comment to that is, can we get, and if it's okay with the board, get you to look at, can we not come up with a commercial, heavy user water entity and give them a rate that will help us produce income so we can help these people with, that it doesn't make sense to give, financial sense, it makes all the sense in the world, but that would kind of offset the financial burden of putting these water lines in? If we could have got to him, and he said he would have used county water, so. And I don't know how many people know how much water chickens drink, but it's huge, more than most manufacturing plants use.
I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking.
Can we, can we look at coming up with a commercial user rate for water for farmers, chicken houses, an unusual way of, an avenue of gaining some income?
Sure, the board sets, you know, that rate, and that's certainly at your pleasure.
Do you know counties around us that have one, and how much, and whatever?
I'd be happy to do a lot of research on that for you and bring some data back, yeah, sure would.
All right, any other comments? All right, Chris, I think you have your direction.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, we'll receive comments from the commissioners and staff, we'll start to the left with Madam Clerk.
None for me, Chairman. Thank you.
None for me either, Chairman. Thanks.
None, sir.
None for me?
Wayne?
No.
None for me, sir.
None for me.
And none for me. Thank you so much. Moving to our vacancy announcements, once Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following opportunities to serve on county boards: Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board for the ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, and the Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, for you folks that are watching at home, please take advantage of these committees and volunteer for them. We do need to go into closed session to discuss threat or pending litigation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss economic development matters, and to discuss personnel matters authorized by NCGS 143318.11A34 and 6. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to go in closed session. All in favor? Take about a five-minute break before we go in. Get started.
All right, I had a motion by Wayne to come out of closed session. We're now back in session. There will be one motion to be made.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we give our county manager the authority to correct two employees' payscales that was an error during the process of the budget process.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Maynard's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All righty.
Thank you.